I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, January 28th, 2025. Please note that this meeting was rescheduled following a post-moment last week due to the snow. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Like regular council meetings of council, citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings and but do allow for public comment at the end. Please note speakers are limited to three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session other than to vote to place the item on the council meeting for consideration and official vote. Council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken and posted on the town's webpage following approval of council. I'm Hazel Livingston, the Mayor of Lexington. I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Laow.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening. Good evening, sorry, wasn't no one there, Mayor?
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
This afternoon, evening, I would like to ask Councilmember Allen to lead us in our invocation.
Everyone bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day and this beautiful new year. Thank you for this lovely town that we call home, Lord, and we ask you to please just guide our footsteps every single time we're up here to do the things exactly in your will to prosper this town and to preserve the peace and prosperity of our neighbors. We love you so much, Lord, and we pray all of this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
And I would like to ask Councilmember Laow to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, oh my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the meeting to order. Council met in executive session prior to the meeting where we discussed the following matters: receipt of legal advice related to pending litigation with West Columbia Water, discussion of employment matters related to the recruitment of parks and community service director and town attorney positions, and discussion regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Laow, second sit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Are there any deletions of items from tonight's work session? If not, we will do our first business item tonight from Planning and Building Director Jessica Librian, an amendment to the sign ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Due to an increase in violations related to window signage, town council directed staff during the August work session to research how other jurisdictions regulate this type of signage. In December, the planning commission unanimously recommended clarifying the definition of a wall sign in the ordinance by adding the following language: "To include signs that are painted on or affixed to the inside or outside of the glass so as to be fully visible from off of the property." Additionally, the commission recommended providing businesses currently in violation with 30 days to come into compliance. Attaching your packet was the staff report with research and also a draft of the ordinance changes proposed by the commission.
Do I hear a motion to take the planning commission's recommendation?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Jessica, just a couple of questions. I guess it specifically says "affixed" too, so if somebody had standoffs on the window, put something three inches inside the window, does that count? Or if people hang something from the ceiling that's clearly visible?
We felt, or the planning commission felt, that the portion of the definition that says to be fully visible from off or on the property kind of would cover that. They were thinking that if it's visible right up against the window, it's considered a wall sign. I know in the past, we've had some issues, not a lot, where people have taken maybe the electronic message boards, and they're inside the store, and they kind of angled them towards the window. And so in the past, we directed those people that they have to turn them where they're not visible from outside of the store.
So, and I wasn't here, but was there any discussion of current compliance? Because I think right here on the 100 block of Main Street, I don't know that any store we currently have would be in compliance with this ordinance. I wrote down 378 from here all the way to Chick-fil-A on Corley Mill, and I counted exactly two businesses that had completely clear windows. So I know these ordinances are really hard to write with some level of discretion or some level of moderation, because it appears to me that 98% of our current businesses that have brick and mortar are not in compliance. And, you know, I mean, do we have the compliance force to even go about doing something like that? Is that something we need to do? Was there even consideration given to some moderation for some level of signage? I mean, presumably, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and they send me this little thing right here, little six-inch by six-inch, and the ordinance says it's written. I don't think I can put that in my window to say I'm a member.
There is an exemption in the ordinance. I believe it's for two square feet and under is exempt, so that you can put up your hours of operation or just your name, as long as it's so that it's identifying your location, but it's under a, I would like to say it's two square feet, it may be four. But there are exemptions. There is also provisions in the ordinance for directional signage. It just cannot contain any type of commercial copy, so it can say "enter" or "drive-through." Those signs cannot exceed 16 square feet. So there are provisions in the ordinance for informational signage. I think that's four square feet, and then product signs as well. So there's some room for interpretation to allow for certain things for hours of operations and things like that. I think the planning commission would like to use this to address people that are covering the entirety of their windows. They feel like the wall signage allotment is sufficient, and they also stated if you're using it for promotional uses, we do have a temporary sign ordinance that they feel is sufficient, and that requires a permit. That was a discussion that planning commission had.
And you mentioned an exemption for name, for hours, for direction. You also said product exemption. Can you explain that to me?
If you sell tires, you can have a product sign that does not exceed 16 square feet that says "tires" or "grocery," you know, similar to our pharmacy. Those are product signs that are sold within the store or offered on the premises. So that is a sign that is allowed. It cannot exceed 16 square feet. And that's in addition to your wall signage allotment.
So when McDonald's has, you know, formerly the $6.99 meal, it's kind of the $16.99 meal right now, I think, but their $16.99 Big Mac meal, what kind of signage are they allowed to run a 30-day, 60-day special, $16.99 number-one meal?
Right. So currently, our ordinance allows for temporary signage. Each business in town is allowed 60 calendar days per year. They do need to receive a permit. That sign cannot exceed 32 square feet, and the permits can be issued in minimum increments of 20 days at a time. So the permit is more so to keep up with. I think it's like a dollar or so a day is the price for the permit, but it's more so for the administrative cost of us keeping up with how long you have your sign out. And we do, we have a procedure where they apply, our permit tech emails out code enforcement and lets them know that they have a sign from this day to that day, and whenever the timeframe ends, we send code enforcement out to make sure the sign has been removed the day after.
So given the level of current non-compliance, what would be the process for trying to bring hundreds of businesses into compliance who have investments made? And I don't know, we got pizza place up here, it's got the pizza sign, the colored pizza sign. What's the process for trying to tackle something that large?
My suggestion would be utilizing our business license database where we have information on all brick and mortar stores that are in town, and we issue a letter to everyone letting them know about the change in the ordinance and providing them with some dates to get to compliance. Generally, what I do with code compliance issues, I try to state that you need to make contact by the deadline date, and if for some reason they're not able to meet the deadline, we try to work with them in certain situations to either extend that or come to an agreement that benefits everyone to get that into compliance.
Jessica, Jessica, I'm not for the Klingons, of course. I'm not, because I, and I've heard from a lot of people today that's not, and some of the planning commission people too, and their thoughts on it and where they come up with their thoughts from. But I understand that, I think they said 30 days. I do feel like it's such a large number that we're going to need to give longer than that and maybe, you know, go through several different processes of trying to encourage them to get them down. I do not think they're the cost of like a sign was when we went through the original sign ordinance that it's a $10,000 sign that needs to depreciate out. I don't feel like it's that, but I am open for a longer period, and I mean, more than, I mean, I'm open from 90 to even, I'm open to six months, but I do want it to start being enforced, and I don't know how we do that. But I do think they need to come down. I mean, it's a safety issue. Chief talked about it when we had Clutch Coffee, and they were covering the windows. If a crime's happening in there and the windows are covered, it's a safety issue. The officers can't see in, and I'm just not for it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
So one of the questions that I had with this, and I don't think any of us disagree, like there are some signs around town, it's like, oh, we probably don't want that up in the window. But there are also some signs around town that they look fine, but I understand that the law has to be applied fairly. You know, we can't pick and choose winners. But one of the questions that I had is, we talked to the planning commission, obviously that's the appropriate channel, but did we go and actually speak with business owners to understand the burden that this might place on them or how, you know, Todd used McDonald's, but what about Chick-fil-A? You know, they've got the beautiful Chick-fil-A sandwich hanging in the window and multiple, and then they got the macaroni over here, and they got their peppermint milkshake over here. So what about them? You know, I mean, how have we talked to them to see how we believe that would impact their business and what a timeline would look like for them? Basically, the gist of my question is have we gotten feedback from businesses?
We have not held any stakeholder meetings. Planning commission wanted to bring their recommendation to you all and then receive instruction further from there.
Okay. One point that I would like to make, Madam Mayor, is, I mean, in October, September of 2023, we set up the Small Business Advisory Committee. This is a perfect example for us to ask them to look at and give us feedback, and I think there's no secret, there are members that would be for this, and there are also members that would be against this, so it'd be a great place for it to go and just hear some feedback from them.
Unfortunately, it's gone to the planning commission. They do have authority over things like this, and I would hate to send it to the business committee now after we've sent it to the planning commission, and they've already made a ruling. And then that committee tried to override what the planning commission has said. I just don't think that's a good thing to do at this point. We should have done that first, Gavin. We should have went the right channel first. Todd and I even kind of discussed that some. He asked me about that, and he understands too that this would not be the right time now to override the planning commission.
Well, certainly, you could go back to the planning commission. I mean, at the end of the day, we have a small business advisory.
Here's what's going to happen, is we're going to continue to have these businesses be out of compliance. They're going to continue. We even had one of your planning commission people stand somewhere and say that she didn't care, that she was out of compliance, she was going to keep putting them up, that it didn't matter. So we're going to continue to be out of compliance or have business getting out of compliance. Then we're going to have more that we've got to get back in. And the Klingons, from what I understand, they're $400 to $600. I understand giving them some time. I don't have a problem. I mean, I understand giving them some time, but we got to stop them from going forward with this and continuing to add them to the windows, and then it's even a bigger issue for our staff.
Well, I think it's inherent upon us, Madam Mayor, that we, I understand your point. I mean, you make a good point that if we continue the process, we're going to have more likely around town that come up. But I do think that it's important for us to hear from the business owners, and where better than to send it to the advisory committee, Small Business Advisory Committee, just to get their thoughts. I mean, I understand that they don't have any authority to overrule the planning commission, the proper channels, the planning commission, but sending it to the Small Business Advisory Committee certainly couldn't hurt anything.
I think we should send it back to the planning commissions if we're going to do that and let them do a stakeholder situation since they have the authority. Since we've already sent it to them, I really think you're asking for problems when...
We could also send it to multiple committees and get input.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It owes my gavel through. I didn't want to step away. Mayor, when does the Small Business Committee meet again?
The 10th.
Very 12th, I think.
Yeah, 12th. Liaison to that, remind me, is it?
It's Gavin.
It's Gavin and who?
Laura.
And Laura. Laura, could you email the Small Business Committee this and let them see it? And they could certainly, and tell them that council would love them to email us their thoughts between now and the time we have our next meeting to make our vote on this?
Yep, we can do that.
They don't necessarily have to have a meeting, I don't think, to, if they want to call each other or they want to meet sooner, they could. They can certainly welcome to call us or email us and give us their input. Of course, we do have an email we got today from Pine Press Printing, from the owner of Pine Press. So they're welcome to give us their...
She's on the committee.
She's on the committee too, so, yep. She certainly has her thoughts. She's expressed those. I too have had conversations with planning commission members who called me who were adamant about 30 days, and then I, but I kind of agree with Mr. Carnes. We need to probably be somewhere in that six-month timeframe to give folks plenty of time to get them down. But we've been, we sent this to the planning commission. We've been working with on this for a while, so everybody has known this is coming, including the Small Business Committee already.
Well, I don't know that that's entirely fair to say. I mean, you can't assume that every member of the Small Business Advisory Committee monitors all of our meetings and knows that this is coming. I mean, I think, I mean, I respect the opinion of sending it out via email, but that doesn't facilitate a conversation for people to be able to talk. I mean, we have another work session in February. Why not just send this and get some feedback, send it back to the planning commission, get some feedback?
The planning commission's already gave you their feedback, and it was unanimous.
Well, I think it's inherent upon us to hear from the small businesses.
Todd, are you thinking this shouldn't move forward, or are you thinking it should have a longer time of getting them down than 30 days, like six months? Or even, I mean, I'm not opposed to even a year of working on this of getting them down, of moving it forward. You know, we're taking the time and start educating them that they can't do this and sending out an education letter. I mean, the sign ordinance was worked on hard to keep our town to look aesthetically pleasing and also to deter crime and stuff. And if you're covering a total business windows to where the police can't ride by and see what's going on in there, and it also is taking away from the aesthetics of the community, I mean, just let them do whatever they want to.
Mayor, so if we, if we, we've gotten recommendations from the planning commission. We put this on our next schedule, we'd be to have...
You got to have two readings and a public hearing.
Yes.
So between now and our second reading, Small Business Committee would have met. If they come back with any recommendations before that meeting, we can certainly decide then at that point what we want to change.
Well, the, okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have one more question. Again, I'm just trying to digest this, and I will say, like, this is a very complex issue, so there's no real simple solutions to complex problems. People will tell you they are just bad politicians, right? So it's complex, and we're trying to moderate the deal and find some level of moderation. Obviously, obviously, you know, our sign's not in horrible shape right now. I mean, our town is not in horrible shape with these signs. I was just wondering, as far as the short-term exemption, the temporary sign exemption, I mean, right now, you pretty much have to come to Town Hall to fill out that permit form, or can you do that online?
You can do that online. It's a fillable form on our website, and it can be emailed in, and we can email you and let you know how to pay online as well, so you don't have to physically come into the office.
Okay, and how many pages is that form?
It's one page.
And you say that's up to 16 feet in size? So we said 16 square feet?
32 square feet.
32 square feet. But it probably, it just has that, like, it doesn't, it's not really set up for windows.
It says banner on there. We could always change that to where it would allow for that to be window signage, but follow, you know, the similar timeframe that you're allowed a certain number of days per year so that you can regulate it. I will say also, I forgot to mention earlier, new businesses are allotted an additional 30 days for their first year in business, so they have their grand opening for their first month if they want to use it that way, but they get an additional 30 days for their first calendar year of business.
Okay. Yeah, again, complex problem, and I certainly don't have the solution, but I would like to at least investigate the idea of temporary signage specifically for windows, and then we would have to go in and delineate. A, you can't cover up your entire window because that's a safety hazard, and chief doesn't want that, nor do we. It's not what we're looking for, but something that covered, you know, less than 30 to 40% of a given window pane and was less than...
Right.
X square feet.
A lot of the municipalities that I researched, I think it was specifically Simpsonville, they had temporary window signs that could not exceed four square feet, and at no point should the sign cover more than 20% of the glass area. So that's kind of in line with what you're talking about there.
And again, I don't know the particulars, but I would say, if, I think if we could come up with a way to remove the friction from the process, so that if I am McDonald's and I do want to run a $16.99 Big Mac special or the McRib or whatever I got, you know, I can send an email and I can fill out, you know, three or four lines. It could something take me five minutes to put everybody on notice, and maybe we could develop something that would be easy and would be a one-size-fits-all and give people, you know, maybe it is 60 or 90 days. So we give the clear message, we're not going to allow you to plaster, you know, billboards in your windows, but we are going to make some kind of allotment for your temporary specials. Because I do think if we ride up and down and see the things that people put in windows, a lot of them are, I mean, they're very relevant, they're very useful for the consumer. You know, there's buy three tires, get one free. I mean, there's some useful information there. So maybe as a part of this process, maybe we could look at something like Simpsonville. But again, that only makes sense if it's totally frictionless, easy, quick for people to do.
Right. Currently, the application, it's not asking for a lot of information. It's asking for your contact information, the size, dimensions of the sign, and how long you're going to have it posted. It's not a lot of information, and honestly, the form could be updated, I mean, it's an older form. It could be updated to where it's a little bit easier to read, and we could even put the code on the form. So it's just plain as day, you can, you don't have to search an internet muni code to find it. You know exactly what your requirements are. So, you know, we could clean that up with a different application, but we would need to, I would want to look at the code and see what the exact terminology is for temporary signs and make sure that it doesn't state banners only.
Yeah, and again, I'm just one voice, so it may or may not be relevant, and I'm one voice talking specifically about temporary signs. I'm not for, you know, the big, huge permanence, but I would like to moderate somehow with temporary signs.
So does that need to go back to planning commission for that wording to be looked at after you do it?
Yes, I'd like to take it back.
Okay. So if it's okay with council, then we will, Todd, let her put together the wordage for the temporary signs and also a form that we will see that is short on how they can do it online and then bring that back, because I think the majority of us up here are not for the permanent plastering of the windows.
Agreed.
And so is that okay with y'all that she takes it back, puts that together, takes it to planning commission, so it's clear in there for our temporary signs since that is something that we want and to allow...
Mayor, I ask a question for clarification. I understand all of that. Would you like to proceed with the amendment as written separately from the temporary window signage? Because technically, we could proceed at the same time that she goes back through planning commission for this other item, just putting it out there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This packet contains something I like looking at, which is a law ordinance, and it purportedly wants us to redefine or add to the definition of a wall sign. Now, I heard you saying a lot about two square feet here, two by one, four square feet, 16 square feet. I have two comments. One, I'm somewhat in agreement with some of what's set up here. I would like there to be some kind of a good faith standard, so we're not running around with rulers and being, I just, I think that's a colossal waste of our time and energy. So I'd like to see a good faith standard, because I think the paradigm of we don't want to cling up all the windows from a safety violation, I think we're all in agreement on that, and also don't think that we want to become the municipality known as running around with rulers or just saying you can't have any. I think a good faith standard would be important. I also think that if all we're changing is the definition of a wall sign, there's a lot that I'm missing on how we've had this long of a conversation, because all we're doing is adding the language that says this includes signs that are painted on or affixed to the inside or outside of the glass so as to be fully visible from off of the property. That's all we're being asked to bet on.
Correct.
So where is all this stuff about two feet and four feet and 16 feet?
Those are additional requirements within our sign ordinance.
That exist.
That exist currently. The wall sign allotment for individual freestanding businesses is 10% of the first story of the wall area that it is attached to. Commercial centers are allowed 15%. So there is a wall sign allotment. This would make the signs affixed to or painted on the interior or exterior of the window count towards that allotment and allowance.
So I don't know that I would be in favor of it counting towards the allotment if what we're saying is someone has X number of square feet of permanent signage on the outside, thereby losing the ability to do a temporary interior window sign. If the goal and the spirit of the window sign is to in fact be temporary, and again, this isn't personal, and I don't have window claims on my business. I just question maybe if we're not trying to take something that's very subjective and put a lot of objective metrics to it.
What the issue is, is not the temporary signs such as Wendy's or McDonald's. The issue is the businesses, the examples that were provided in the report, there were several...
Sure, and they say good cases make bad law. The liquor store with all of its windows covered is a great example of why we don't want full window claims. But to say that you got two feet or four feet out of your 280 feet of windows, I think is, I just, it doesn't follow the spirit of what I think I want. But again, I'm just, just like Councilman Carnes said, I'm one voice.
We operated on good faith, and I think...
Then we should be able to use good faith to tell the liquor store, whomever who's fully covered, that they're...
But we don't have any teeth in our ordinance. That's the issue that we're seeing, is that it's very difficult to enforce when window signage is not addressed in the ordinance per se. We've always said, our interpretation in the past has been that if it's on the exterior of the building, it was considered permanent signage, and that has led us to the issue where we are now. We have all of these storefronts that are now covered with signage, and they are not meeting the architectural appearance ordinance, which states that signage cannot overwhelm the site. So we have an issue where we've operated in good faith, and now it's kind of, it's been taken... taken advantage of. So without having something in the ordinance to enforce, it's difficult to get those people that have taken advantage of the good faith to remove the window signage.
Mayor.
Yes.
So, just to be clear, all we're addressing tonight is the full window clings?
It's
The definition.
It's the definition. Planning Commission only wanted and recommended to change the definition of the wall sign because they felt that that allotment was sufficient for businesses.
Right.
And so they wanted to change that definition to make it clear that that included anything painted on or fixed to the windows, not just permanent box signs or cabinet signs or channel letters. They felt that the current code for temporary signage was sufficient because that was part of the considerations that I presented in the staff report where, do you want to differentiate, you know, some of the very same concerns that Councilmember Lyle mentioned. So that was Planning Commission's recommendation.
Right, so we're not changing the portion on the door where you can put your hours, we're not changing the portion on the door where you can see, you know, so into those offices here where you have multiple doors on a building. We're just changing the ordinance so that you can enforce the full window clings and get those removed.
Yes.
I think
Essentially, that's the goal.
I think what happened is that we have a sign company that is just basically told us that it was not clear in our ordinance, our definition was not there and so
And that's not the only issue. I mean, you have vendors sending different restaurants, they send them these free window clings that are full covering because they're advertising their product. So they're going to send them to them and they're going to put them up, you know, on the weekends themselves, their business owners are, or their employees and, you know, we cannot, it's hard to monitor those things whenever they're not required to have a permit or it's not directly called out in the ordinance. And so it's a very, like you said, a complex issue.
No, Governor, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So by changing that definition, and I'll be very clear, I have an issue with the full window clings as well. I think there are very few cases in town where it looks good. You know, and hearing from Chief that it's a safety concern is certainly at top of mind also. But by changing that definition, we are bringing the Chick-fil-A's, and I hate to keep calling them out, the McDonald's, we are bringing them out of compliance.
If you do not change your temporary sign order, ordinance to include window clings of a certain size, then yes, that will, that is what will happen.
So by changing the definition, we are sort of creating another issue until we address that issue, so I can't.
So wait a minute, could we, is it possible, since we're going to give them enough time for you to get the temporary sign ordinance updated? I mean, if, say if we say 90 days, that they've got 90 days to come in compliance, that gives us plenty of time to get the temporary definition in there, right?
I could have something to Planning Commission on their February agenda.
And so it would be back to us on our March for the temporary to be done and that way you're not, if you have this definition, at least new ones that are coming on would be stopped, correct? But we're not messing with the ones that are already up there like the Chick-fil-A or the McDonald's. Because they got 90 days. Okay, let's say six months.
They're still out of compliance.
Let's say, no, not technically, because they got six, six months. Let's give them six months.
Well, that's just six months to get in compliance. We are bringing, and please tell me if I'm wrong, we are bringing them out of compliance, right?
It would make them out of compliance, yes, but they would not have to correct the issue until the deadline, which is up to your discretion.
Right. Yeah, so we are in some ways creating an issue that I understand what you're saying we're going to address, but why don't we, I mean, I guess my position is why don't we just, rather than trying to rush this, why don't we just do this right and do it in one package so that we're not creating issues?
So how many more do you think they're putting up every day?
It's hard to say. I mean, the sign companies that I've spoken with that have asked about window signage since the, what, August work session, I have notified them all that this is, you know, under consideration and that we are researching. And I have asked them to please not put anything up in the windows until we come to a conclusion. Some of them have, some of them have listened, so it's, you know. Got apple in every bunch, I mean, I
Could I, and this is just throwing something out there, could we not communicate directly with our businesses that council is considering this right now? I mean, I know the Small Business Advisory Committee sent out a survey, so we have emails. I know we don't have emails for every single business. Some got bounce backs, whatever, but could we just do an email that says, this is something we're considering, we are trying to work through it? This, basically an advisement, we would recommend not investing in any window clings until we can figure out exactly what changes we're going to make. That's also, so now we've notified the sign companies, but we've also sent a nice notification to our business community that this is an issue before council, you may not want to invest in anything until the issue is settled.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just for my personal clarification, I think this is right. I think part of our problem right now is an exterior window cling is out of compliance and interior one is not.
If we utilize the existing interpretation.
Right, as it's currently written, so that's, that's our pressure point. I, Madam Mayor, I kind of think, I do think they are two separate issues and I do think there is some liability to continuing on knowing that it's going to change. I don't mind personally treating them as two separate issues because I think having, I think we wrote the definition, we didn't have interior window clings. And so I think clarifying the definition is perfectly fine and then whatever, whatever the majority decides to do with temporary signage and/or window clings for that matter is, I think we could figure that out along the way. I think we could treat them separately. I do think that, I do think some greater level of moderation in the temporary signage would be helpful. I just don't know what that is and I don't know if a majority of us believe that, but I would at least like to pursue that as part of the process.
And you've got several different ordinances that can be looked at and you can give us some comparisons?
Yes, ma'am, that's in your packet. That was part of the report that I provided. And it talks about temporary signage in there as well and differentiating between what is temporary signage and what is not on windows.
I do think it's important, you know, the car dealerships have to get for their banners and stuff like that, they have to get the temporary, or the permit, and I think it's important that we do clarify that for them and give them something to be able to do what they want to do, but.
Madam Mayor, if I could be recognized?
Yes.
I would go back to the question I asked though, is could we, A, could we not communicate with our business community to let them know that we are considering this? And then B, the second point I'd like to make is, you know, the Small Business Advisory Committee, they're going to present results at some point, but, I mean, they've heard from the business community and one of the issues raised was policies, procedures were felt at times to be too harsh and I, I'm not saying that I agree with that, but this is a prime opportunity for us to hear from those business owners. So I, essentially, if we're going to take time to get more feedback, I don't see any issue in sending this, just to get feedback from the Small Business Advisory Committee. I mean, I understand it's already been to the Planning Commission, but it's never the right time, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. And that, to me, that's getting feedback from our small business community.
Mayor.
Yes.
Jessica, does this ordinance or does this include, you know, we talked about lighting at one point, does this have anything to do with the lighting or is that a separate ordinance?
That would be a separate issue.
Separate issue, okay.
So I guess we need to decide if we want to move forward with the definition to make sure it's clear and straight. And Jessica, how does, how would that work? Todd, if you're okay with the definition, what is the timeframe for sending it out? Are we sending any letter out until we get the temporary to notify them they're out of compliance, but it just stops anybody from going forward? So you can notify the business, I mean, the sign people and say, it is clear now?
I'm just, Madam Mayor, I'm just thinking process. I mean, tonight, we are talking about placing this on the next agenda. It's the only action that we're taking.
Right.
But that next agenda comes up in one week, right?
It does.
So why don't, why don't we place it on the next agenda and put it on the one, five weeks from now?
In March.
Yeah, just since that, I mean, usually we have significantly more time.
So if that's the case, you would have time to bring this back. You would have time probably for the March meeting to have the temporary too, something from through Planning Commission.
Yes, I can put it on February's agenda for Planning Commission to review again.
Okay.
The February Planning Commission meeting, we will be having a work session on February the 18th for the landscape ordinance, which will also provide us time to discuss this as well. And then the actual meeting is on, regular meeting is on February the 19th.
And, and Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're, I think they're two totally separate issues. I think the clarification of the definition is absolutely necessary because we have a, we have an outdated definition that's kind of nonsensical right now. So having Planning Commission recommend, we actually put a 2025 definition on that, I think is great. I think we should, we could press that forward. I think we're convoluted two different things, I think we do that. But because we're doing that, it brings up to the surface a lot more how we want to treat these signs in general, especially temporarily. So I think we can run them concurrently, especially if we can push it off to that next meeting.
To March. So, and the other thing is, Jessica, I mean, would it be hard to send out a simple letter to the brick and mortar telling them that we're working on this sign?
No, ma'am.
And just notify them?
No, ma'am. I think that sending
Or email.
An actual letter may, you may be able to reach more, like you said, because we have received a bounce back. I just have concerns about email getting to, some of those emails go to business license handlers or their accountants and things of that nature. They don't go into the actual store.
So just, just send out, mail out a letter to them, tell them that we are working this, you want them to be aware to please not add any more to their windows at this time.
And
Mayor. I'll amend my motion that we put this on the November, I mean, on the March agenda.
Third.
March 3rd.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before we take a vote on that, I think we still need to decide if we'd like to get formal approval or, excuse me, not approval, feedback from the Small Business Committee. I'm not in favor of just informal, I mean, this is a prime opportunity to engage our business community, let's at least hear what they have to say. They don't have any authority over this, I mean, but it's still a great opportunity for us to let them speak.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think if there were ever an item for the Small Business Committee, this would be one of them, just to get their feedback.
Whatever y'all want to do.
They're already having a meeting between the time we, between the time that they meet and the time for our next, March 3rd.
I think they need to be fully aware of how the Planning Commission feels though.
Right.
And I think it needs to be presented by the staff member.
I agree.
To them, totally, by the staff member.
Madam Mayor, if, if Jessica, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I'm sure that the Chair, Matt Thompson, would love to have you come and present this. I think you'd be the perfect person to explain it. I expect you might get a little bit of pushback, but I think you'd be the perfect person to explain it and I commend you for the work that you've done. I mean, this was a very thorough analysis and very helpful and I can tell that you're really trying to do the right thing, so thank you.
I just want to remind everybody up here that when the sign ordinance was done, it was a very tough thing and every person that stood in my face and screamed and pitched a fit, this day, all those years later, 26 years later, says thank you for pushing that through because our community looks so much better than all the others around us. So I want to remind y'all that hard decisions sometimes have to be made, but we had a motion and a second, all those, yes.
If I may, I'd like to just clear, clarify my position. I look at this example that's in our packet with a liquor store and a nail store and a dentistry store. These are bad. We don't, we don't, we want to be able to ask these folks to comply, so I'm in favor of doing something. I just think it, this may not always be the easiest option for government just to come in and do something. So I, I'm in favor of getting feedback from our Small Business Community. They're not a governing body, they're just going to give us their feedback and I'm not a window cling guy. I don't like McDonald's. I don't, I don't know that I patronize many of these places and my businesses would never have these on the windows just because that's not the nature of them. There's nothing wrong with these necessarily, but I, I don't think the tone up here, at least as I've heard it, is from anyone anti-signage. I think they just want what's best for the town, I think myself included. So I appreciate the hard work that you have done. This is not an easy problem. It's not easy to tackle and like many of these things, there very well may be tweaks and learning curves and adjustments and realizations that as the application of this change is put to use, there may, it may need some tweaking. So I thank you for what you've done. It's a tough problem.
I want y'all to remember that we will have a vote on the 3rd and then there will have to be another vote with the public here. And so the public and the business people that have a problem, and there will be some that haven't, will be able to come speak. And the people, like Mr. Chuck Corley called me today and said, Hazel, please fight to keep them from covering the windows like they're doing in a lot of places. He'll be able to come speak too, so there'll be people on both sides that can come speak to y'all for the public hearing and y'all can hear them then.
Well, I think
I will call for the vote now. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's going to March the 3rd. We're going to March the 3rd for the item on those
What is, what is the vote?
January you voted for.
Can we clarify, can we clarify the vote? I mean
That this is moving to March the 3rd and she's got her orders of what to do with it.
And does the vote need to be amended to send this for formal?
No, it does not. She was told what to do. It's not part of the vote. Council agreed that it could go to your business committee.
So it doesn't need to be amended as part of the vote?
No, it's not a, it's not a legal thing for that to go there because they're not a legal body.
Well, they are a legal body.
Okay, they're not an authority body, body.
I don't know why there's so much apprehension to send this to small business, but if you'll call the vote again, we can do that.
We called it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is, I guess, unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number two is economic developer Jack Stewart, brand identity project vendor selection.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
You'll have shorter conversation.
I hope so. A little bit taller than Jessica, so bear with me here. As y'all know, we were awarded the Hometown Economic Grant from the Municipal Association of South Carolina at the end of last year. So with that, and that was to help and support the comprehensive and cohesive brand identity initiative that we wanted to start here, which will serve as a critical component as pertains to the 2040 Vision Plan as well as the Town Council Strategic Plan moving forward. So in response to a request for qualifications, the town received 24 proposals and after careful evaluation, destination by design from Boone, North Carolina emerged as the most qualified and budget-friendly vendor. The total cost of the branding project is $33,000, partially offset by the $25,000 MASC grant and the previously committed 15% match required by the grant. However, there's an additional $4,250 that would come from the town's Vision Plan Fund that would be required to cover the additional expenses. I'm happy to answer any questions or anything about the process or vendor or anything within that.
Do I hear a motion to put this on the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Smith makes a motion, do I hear a second? Or I'm getting my motions before you have discussion, if that's okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carron, second now. Is there any discussion, Councilmember Lyle?
Jack, can you just clarify that this is a $33,000 total cost of which you're asking for the town to contribute $4,250 to get to the full 33,000 as on this is?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there will be no other charges?
We have the 15% match.
Well, I'm talking about the total that you gave.
Outside of this, there is an accelerator potential to it, but that would be based upon the findings from their market research. But the baseline price to start the process and start to finish, we can do it in $33,000.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A couple of questions for you that I think would just be good for the general public to understand. So could you, you, you just said their market research. Could you outline like what sort of community, feedback, residents, business owners, staff?
Absolutely.
Committees, et cetera, is going to be gathered for this?
Yeah, so I've got a, and there's a full proposal as well, but I've kind of got the project breakdown. It's easy to read here. So yeah, they'll start with the discovery and analysis and community engagement process as step one. And that's going to have a field visit, a stakeholder engagement meeting. Online survey tools will be used, independent research, market analysis as well, as well as a discovery presentation and a travel and community data analysis. So it'll be a thorough, comprehensive market research and community stakeholder meetings as well.
Great. Madam Mayor, if I could ask one more follow-up. So something that came to mind for this, and we may need to ask Director Edwards. We're working on that. Is it the Master Wayfinding Project? I don't remember if it's Randy or who's doing that. But my one concern that came to mind with this, as we're working on new brand standards, we also at the same time have this wayfinding project going on. What if we redefine colors? What if we redesign typesets? Branding is obviously one of my, the things that I do professionally. So that just came to mind is, you know, I believe we're spending a decent amount of money on the wayfinding package. Could this completely make that null and void? I, I mean, I, I think it could. Are those two consultants, vendors, teams, staff members, are they talking to make sure that we don't get too far ahead in that wayfinding package? Just have to go back and do it again?
Mayor, I'm happy to respond. We, we've not proceeded with the wayfinding package.
Okay, I thought we had proceeded.
No.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
And, and just for clarification on this process, it's primarily identity to understand who we are, the types of residents that we have because of our growth and our changes. You know, we just updated our noise ordinance because we have a large Hindu population, for example, in some of the multicultural activities that we have now. And so while there may be an aspect of brand update that comes out of this when it comes to logo or colors, this is primarily for us to understand who is in our community, the sorts of events that we should have, the types of communications that folks want, et cetera.
So, I'm sorry, may I ask one more follow-up? So this is a brand identity study. So we're not looking at, I guess, maybe I need to see the full proposal because my understanding is that we were looking at all of our brand assets in this. But this is more who we are, I mean, a true brand analysis. This isn't a brand assets study.
Correct, yes. This is more brand positioning and strategy, so understanding where we are. That's, the research component of this is much more heavy than just changing a logo. So we will evaluate the assets as they help us position in the market. But it's going to be up to the recommendation by the consultants as well as internal teams and stakeholders of recommendations for change of actual branding material.
Okay, that, that is very helpful because I was under the impression we were looking at logos and fonts and all of that. So, and maybe, and I'll stop talking, maybe explain the difference between what a brand truly is, a brand identity, rather than, because a lot of people think your brand is the Apple logo here.
Correct, yeah. So we're going for trying to understand who we are and the feeling that we perceive to the people that are in our community. So I think all of us know that there's this kind of home feeling to Lexington, whether it's the place that you want to shop or worship or eat dinner or anything like that. But people have difficulty putting that into words. So we're having a consultant make sure that we're hitting all different nooks and crannies of the community, bringing that idea together and giving us something that we can work forward with. And that's why we were able to kind of lump this in as well with the vision plan update as well as strategic plan moving forward, to make sure we're really standard of who we are today that hasn't really been touched in over 25 years or so.
Great, thank you for explaining that, Jack.
Anybody else have any questions?
I sure do.
Okay.
Jack, go back to what you said originally. You said $33,000, you said 15%. Go, read back over what the, what the total is there.
Yeah, so the total project budget is $33,000. That's going to be offset by the, there's a $25,000 grant that we received. With receiving that grant, we had to have a 15% match.
Right.
So the 15% is $3,750. So we are all in without the additional budget at $28,750. We need the additional funds to get to that $33,000 in order to engage with these, this vendor.
But we're signing your contract for $33,000, and we're not going to authorize, staff's not authorized to spend any more than $33,000 with us approving this.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just, I'm sorry, I'm just catching up. So we, we RFP'd this and, and got these 24 proposals. So the, the one that, that you guys have chosen, were, were we provided with that contract so that we could see deliverables? This, this is not my lane, and I'm, you know, like, I'm, I'm really curious in the research of who we are, less so than thinking about the idea of rebranding.
Sure.
That would, that would not excite me because that's a very expensive undertaking. And, but I would be very curious about the research of finding out who we are. So as far as their proposal and their deliverables, like, how much of that is the research into our community and who we are at a much more granular level than what we get with the census?
Yeah, so they've broken into four tasks that they're going to be kind of working off of. They're pretty manageable. The first task actually has six components to it that it'll go through in the initial research phase. And that's going to be the, like, the field studies, stakeholders, that kind of stuff. So that's external in the market. Phase two is going to be the brand strategy and positioning. So that's going to be more internal of figuring out who we are today from our perspective and figuring out the logistics of what our brand is, how it's voiced today as well, and how that compares to kind of how the community saw it. So, and that has, that's an additional four line items there. So taking from that, they then only have four pieces of deliverables when it comes to like changing logos and colors and typefaces and things like that that might fit that category. So this is very, very research-heavy, and that was something that the internal team, when looking at these, were, were very adamant about having as part of this from a vendor. So we had a, let's say, majority of the proposals that we had were very, "We're going to change your logo, and this is what it could look like" kind of thing. And here's other logos we changed. And this vendor was very much becoming part of the community and creating that feeling, which is kind of what we were going for. So this was a difficult RFP to get in front of someone and kind of portray. And it really took the right vendor to understand what we were talking about.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you don't mind, I, I want to follow up on what Jack said.
I'm going to have to say he's still in professor mode tonight.
I was going to say, if I could just put my professor hat on for like 15 seconds.
I was thinking you're in professor mode tonight.
Because I just want to plainly explain, because I think someone watching this may think when we're doing a brand study again that we're looking to change our logo. A brand is not your logo. That is your brand asset. A brand is what people think or feel about you, what they say about you when you're not in the room. When someone says the word "Apple," what do you think about? That's your brand, and we're trying to figure out what do people think about the town of Lexington. Now I'll take my professor hat off.
You did a great job. You've had it on all night. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It said we received 24 proposals. I'm just curious, did we, Boone, North Carolina is close, but did we get any proposals from anybody that was from the Midlands that would know Lexington better than Boone?
We did. We actually had one that was, we had an in-town vendor, actually. Yeah, we had, I believe the next closest was Oak Grove, so technically right outside of town, and a couple other Columbia-based firms as well. So we had some, some local options. But through the process of deciding who'd be best fit for this, we were able to choose this. And also budget planning value as well.
Right, that's what I figured.
And Jack, you also, you had a committee that went through all these, too, of staff and people that-
Correct.
And y'all worked through them to make sure you were getting what Gavin just explained.
Correct.
Too.
So the, the internal PR committee that we have, so that's comprised of myself, Michael with Video Access, Kaylee with social media, Lauren with Media Relations, as well as Sergeant Mortensen from PD. We were the internal committee on that. The way that the review process worked is that we had a weighted grading system. We did it based on qualifications with everything but budget. And then we took our top five from that. We opened their budgets, and then we were able to add that into the weighted scale, and we were able to have our, our top runners here, so.
Anything else? All those in favor of putting this on the agenda, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item is number three from Assistant Town Administrator Stuart Ford. And this one's going to probably be long, procurement update and discussion. Stuart's like, "No." I could see in his face, "No." You want me to get the professor over there?
Cliff notes, Stuart, cliff notes.
Luckily, Madam Mayor, I am not a finance or accounting professor.
But you did good on that one.
Madam Mayor, members of council, our purchasing ordinance dates from 1994 with amendments. We had one update that occurred about 20 years ago, which changed the thresholds for purchasing parameters. We had sealed bids at that point that were at $10,000, anything above $10,000. And we had a tradition of bringing all of our sealed bids to council for approval. That is not required in the current ordinance because all of the purchasing authority is delegated to staff. So long as the purchasing complies with the ordinance, staff is able to execute. Staff got together, several, all of, each department had a representative who is involved in the department's purchasing, come together, and let's talk about the situation we have today. What, how is this working? What do we feel like is the challenge that we face in, in operations? And how do we modify it in order to be more efficient, but also keeping in mind that we want to have a proper amount of accountability? And so what you have before you in the packet, there's a lot of information. There's a summary sheet that talks about the changes that we've proposed. There is a draft ordinance which is modeled off of the model ordinance that was produced by the Municipal Association. It has updates and modifications to address our specific town situation. And then we also include a survey from entities around the state about how they handle these various purchasing questions. Finally, the full current ordinance is in there, has been provided to you. The basic changes that we're proposing are thus. Anything less than $1,000 is going to be what the model ordinance calls a field purchase. And basically, we're, we're going to set a standard of the attempt to get three verbal quotes. If it makes sense, what can happen, given all the circumstances for these relatively small dollar amounts. Above $1,000, going to $5,000, it requires three verbal quotes that are documented. And above $5,000 to $50,000 is three written quotes are required. That's the basic parameter. Above $50,000, it would be sealed bids, and any purchase would be approved by council above $50,000, whether it's a sealed bid, or if it's a state contract, or if it's a professional service. All of those would come before you for approval. That's the most significant change that we are proposing to give you the input on those relatively large single purchase amounts. If you, if you consider the number of sealed bids we've done in the last few years, sealed bids right now require greater than $20,000 for things that aren't on state contract, aren't professional services. About 14 of those each year, where we advertise, get proposals back, and make an award to the lowest responsive bidder. If we make this change, basically, my best guess is maybe 30 CEOs will come to you each year in a council meeting. So on average, a little more than two a meeting, where you all will weigh in on lessening the purchase. We, we, so that's the basic proposal. If something is on state contract, right now, we're able to purchase under state contract anything that's basically budgeted and move forward with that. But if it's greater than $50,000 on state contract, it would come to you for approval. So just imagine if you tell us to buy 15 automobiles for the, for the fleet, and we're going to buy half of those from one vendor on state contract because they're police vehicles, that would come before you all to say, "Yes, move forward." That is the single biggest change. Part of the updates to modernize it is we put in language specifically that would allow for design build. It's something that we presume we had the authority to do, the design build for contracting. There's, that was an optional section that we chose to put in just to specify that design build is an appropriate method for doing a construction project. We, we brought in the portions of the existing ordinance that deal with the local vendor preference and deal with managing of our inventory and physical assets. Those with minor, only one minor change to that, and that is the current ordinance says if you're disposing of anything less than $250, you have to basically get it out. In effect, you have to advertise it. We are just suggesting that be changed to $1,000. So that's the big picture, with the significant change being more of input directly from council. And staff brings this to you because we think we can operate well in that, with those parameters, that we can not be limited when we're operating in the field and being put in a pinch because we've got to check certain boxes on things that are just almost routine purchases. But for the significant big items, you all would have a direct input. And we bring this to you knowing that these are our recommendations, but we want your feedback if you think that we need to modify some things. We just want to hear that so that we can tweak it based upon your feedback.
Do I hear a motion to put this on the agenda?
Second.
Councilman Michaels makes a motion. Do I hear a second? Do I don't want to change the policy? You can vote, we can do discussion.
I'll, I'll second it so that we can have the discussion, Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So Stuart, I, I heard you talk about, so when you talk about bringing things to council sealed bids, currently, we have sealed bids for things as small as $60,000, and we may have something in, in Public Works that's $3 million or more. And so we say we're bringing those to council now for approval. What exactly does that mean? Does that mean you're, does that mean you're going to do the analysis on the three bids and bring the lowest bidder for approval? Are we bringing all the bids to council now for council to weigh in on whether the lowest bidder is capable of performing and getting into those particulars? Because I, I thought originally there was a separation there so that, so that those items wouldn't get politicized, and people wouldn't be calling their council members going, "Hey, I, I bid $2 million on that project. Can you help me out?" What are we talking about here? I'm confused about that wording. Can you just explain what you mean there?
So thank you for that question. It's an important one. Right now, we're, we're bidding things at, beginning at $20,000 sealed bids. That has been the, the standard for nearly 20 years. That has been the standard for nearly 20 years. In the early days, when I first came here, any sealed bid we brought to council. And it would list, basically, these are the bids we received, the engineer has evaluated and made this recommendation, or the staff member is evaluating, makes this recommendation. The action item is council approval of awarding the contract to XYZ vendor who is the lowest responsive bidder.
Stuart, let me put it right there. If I remember correctly, it was, I didn't say 99% of the time, it always went with staff's recommendation?
It was, it was very rare. I think you're right for it to be different. And so over time, because it was not a requirement of the ordinance, the council said, look, for some of the reasons you're talking about, we don't, we don't want to touch that. So long as you all are following the ordinance, it evolved to just bring those types of things to us as a, as a, as an information item so that council's aware. So there is accountability, but it's not, not, it's not the accountability on the front end, it's the accountability after the fact that we're doing what you all have instructed us to do. We didn't want to presume what the wishes of this council were. So you all, if you all give us feedback that, that you're concerned about that and you think that the current process of making you aware is sufficient, we'll take that into consideration. We wanted to get your feedback.
I think I'm okay with y'all making me aware, but I'm only speaking for me in that, that part, just as long as y'all bring it to us with the informational item like you have for a long time with who bid and what their bids was and just who y'all going with.
Right.
I think some of the concern was with the procurement policy was the change orders and council knowing the change orders in big projects. I think that was the main concern I think some of us had.
So, thank you. I should have addressed that specifically because that is something we specified in here, that change orders, you know, had to be approved with the same thresholds of approval authority as other items, and that, that staff could not approve a change order that would exceed the adopted budget for a project, that council would be the only one that would have that authority. And then change orders greater than 50,000 would, would come to council. But we, we will make it whatever the council believes is the wisest course. If you all want to be made aware of all authorizations for greater than 50,000, whether it's a change order or an original purchase, we can do that.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, am I understanding it correctly that every time Chief wants to buy a patrol car, now you're going to have to come ask us, even though we've put it in the budget, we're still going to have to approve it a second time, basically?
Yes.
So is there a way for us to be able to say that when we do the budget process, Chief can spend $55,000 and no more per vehicle and he can buy up to 15 vehicles at no more than 50?
You heard that, Chief. You heard that, yeah.
He can't move, he can't spend 60 on one and 50 on another. He can't exceed 55 without council approval instead of us having to approve every standard car that we know we're going to buy?
You can do that, and that is what other municipalities in the survey, some do that. If an item is budgeted, and it's on state contract, or if we do the sealed bid, but it's a budgeted item, it doesn't have to come back to council unless somehow it's not matching up with your budget.
I'm fine, as long as it's a budgeted item and it, I mean, I don't think we got to get down to that. I think some of the concern here on this procurement was the change orders that were happening that we didn't know about until it become a big thing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I think to piggyback on that, the change order problem would be further exacerbated if we allowed there a threshold of 50,000 and there was a $30,000 change, and then two months later, another $30,000 change for a net change of 60,000, but each individual change was below the threshold. I'm curious what the mechanism is to prevent that because again, I do think the sticker shock came with a change order on one or two of the most recent projects and us failing to hit the budgeted mark, and that was.
So the, the control that is in the ordinance is we also added a section that says that all capital projects, capital improvement projects, it specifies that the adopted budget must include certain items. Contingency, engineering, project management, and so forth, land acquisition. And the control would be that that budget could not be exceeded by a change order. So you would authorize us to do the project with some amount of contingency, which is typical, that we could do change orders up to that limit, so long as they, not a single one was greater than 50. But the control overall is the project budget. That was the thinking of how we deal with that specific issue.
Mayor?
Yes.
So if the project, if we, if we bid the project out at $500,000, we could set the limit of, we'll give you, we'll give you 550 to have change orders worth. And if they, if the project got to 550, then it would have to stop until you came to council for more.
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, again, this is kind of a complex thing to think out, try to project out in the future. I would say, I mean, I've been here for 10 years. I don't like the idea of highly politicizing this council with a bunch of RFPs on the street. I don't, I don't think that's going to serve our citizens well, and I don't think that's going to serve our council well. I think those decisions are best made by staff. I can only envision the seven of us, you know, trying to figure out if, if we all think this road work contractor is qualified to perform this $2 million project when that's way out of our lane, and we're going to have all kinds of conflicts. People are going to have to conflict out because they know these contractors, you know, this kind of deal. So I would prefer that we delegate that to the staff, de-politicize the process. I do, I do think we should be put on notice, and I think there's probably a way to inform us more speedily than we have in the past when, when an award is made, so that we're the first to know, you know, these four people bid on this project and this was the low bidder and we qualified them and took them, or this is a low bidder and we disqualified them based on X and X and X and went with the second lowest bidder. So that would be my thought on that. The other thought I had on this is maybe the, as Councilmember Lyle mentioned, maybe a number is not right there at 50,000, maybe that should be a percentage of the project that, that should be based on percentages, not on just a number. That may be an easier way to do it. I do think your control of the overall budget, that we should never cross the overall budget because I, I don't, I don't want the general public to misunderstand, like if we buy new cars for our police officers, we debate that thoroughly during the budget time. It's presented, hey, we need four new cars and they're going to cost this much.
He took you nine, I can't do a thing with you.
Fifteen to four, man, I just say they're buying 11 cars. I'm just working, doing work. So we, we do debate those things and we solve it at that time. And then after that, we know Chief's going to go get a deal, he'd figure out how to get five out of four. And I don't really want to mess with how he gets his deals, you know? I don't even want to know. I want plausible deniability. But that along with a percentage, and then where it says the director may provide procedures, for instance, is where you can't get three oral or written quotes. I do know that happens in today's world. People aren't looking to bid on small projects. Just right now, we have that as the finance director. And I would think, I would think something where we were going to skirt our written directions, that that would be something that would go to one of you two as opposed to finance director. I don't know what the thinking is there, but I would think if you're going to give that, that level of discretion, it seems like it'd go to one of you two.
Stuart, she's an option.
Yes, sir. That would be, you know, you could, we could just add the director and the town administrator or something to that effect for that. I mean, the situations we have are multiple, but one of the situations is you have a car that's broken down and you have to get estimates, and you take it to the dealer and he tells you, he gets it on the rack, and their deal is, well, if you're, it's going to cost, say it's a $2,000 repair job or whatever. Do we take it off the rack, go down the street, and each of them charges a fee for evaluating it, where, where a person who's responsible for that purchase should have a good enough judgment to evaluate whether they're getting a decent bid for something at that, that cost level? So, you know, those are the type of situations we're talking about where it's not practical to get, easily get multiple written quotes. Or, you know, if we attempt to solicit and get three quotes and people return a quote that says not bidding, you know, that is a quote. They're not going to give you a quote. So those are the type of things, but I, I, we certainly can add a town administrator or designate type thing to that.
So I think you have a few things to go back and change. One being that if it's in the budget, it doesn't, I mean, we've already vetted all of that, and it should be able to go without having to come back before us on that. The other one is, like Todd said, and I think that y'all do let us know, y'all do give us a list of who bid and all that kind of good stuff, y'all keep us running on that. I think most of our main concern has been when we have a large project of knowing. So maybe not only, like he said, a percentage of it instead of the $50,000, but also letting us know as change orders happen, so just informing us, just so we can be paying attention.
So am I hearing that, that the consensus is that council will be informed of these large purchases, including the change orders? So basically, it would be a delegated authority, just as it stands today, but with enhanced information provided to you guys more routinely. We're doing it on a quarterly basis. We could do additional updates as well as these things occur.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think we could do additional updates, but I, I think the one thing that's, you didn't say, Stuart, was we still all still have that cap. So if the projects kind of bump the cap, we need to know before it goes, before we do any more change orders. Another question I have is, see Mr. David leaning back against his chair back there. Mr. David, his stuff's pretty expensive. He can spend 50 in about three seconds. So I mean, what, what happens with the water department if we have a major pump go down that's 150? We don't have time to get three bids. What happens there?
So some of these things would be characterized as an emergency purchase, depending on the nature of it. Others, it takes, it takes a while to do a pump repair. You have to send it off. So there's going to be time to, I would believe David can correct me, am I wrong, if I'm wrong, but to get some quotes. A lot of the things that, that David talked about was being in the field and being, having to, to get certain items. Right now, $1,000 and above, they have to get three written quotes. And so that can slow down the efficiency because, you know, $1,000 isn't what it was in 2003. And so the practicality is to raise that to 5,000 to give them more operational efficiency daily, routinely. The larger things, we'll continue to handle them the way we do now, to stay within the purchasing ordinance, having to deal with those same issues with a $20,000 sealed bid requirement at this point. This would give us a little more flexibility with it being at 50. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just ask a question? I haven't been on council during a major project. Every major project, we've been wrapping up. So Stuart, maybe just for my education, or maybe this is something we don't do, but could we get, I'm going to use Old Mill Trail. As Old Mill Trail is, that project is going on, are routine updates on the monies that were allocated versus what's spent, like budget updates, are they provided? I mean, I know we get like the quarterly reports, but are specific reports on monies being spent on large scale projects like that, are they reported to council so that we're kept abreast of how we're tracking on what was budgeted versus what was spent?
So in recent years, we had, have had large projects, and they, the time where we did significant updates, where we went in depth with the status of projects, was at our retreats. We had a whole series of presentations that went through every project and it talked about the current status, the issues we're facing, the budget dollars, how we're paying for, all those things. So with going forward, what I envision is council either in the annual budget, or if we have a project, we present to you the budget, you get your blessing on it. If the bids come in and we have to update the budget, then that comes to you to authorize us to update the budget based upon a bid, the low bid being higher than what we anticipated. We will have to manage that. And then certainly, we can, we can craft our monthly reports to council, any number of ways to keep you up to date about the current expenditures versus the budget on those.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation, and that's a good point. I mean, we do have to do budget adjustments. But, and I'm only speaking for me, I have no clue how the rest of the council feels, but I think just for me, it would be helpful to know when we have major projects, I'm not talking about every single thing at town hall, that would be way too cumbersome, but you know, major projects like Old Mill Trail again, or the parking lot down at Old Mill Trail, or whatever. I mean, I think we could establish some parameters of just what we budgeted and how we're tracking to know if we should expect overages, or are we tracking and we actually aren't going to send as much as we thought, which would be great.
Absolutely.
So Stuart, have you heard council on some things that you need to go back and change? And should this come back to us again?
We certainly can make those tweaks that you all have suggested.
And then send it back to us and let us read it again and?
We can, it can come back to the work session on February 10th for further action. If you like, and we can have first reading in March.
Is that okay? So he can get some things. And then if you have any thoughts as you're reading it, because I can tell your mind is thinking, you can send him some, or send us all some thoughts that you have on it, too.
No, I agree.
Is that okay?
That's great, and thank you for the feedback. That's what we really wanted.
We would like to second, we could table this until?
To table it, so we need to vote on that, right?
Vote and table it to February 10th.
Or for it to come back to the work session. So we're going to vote for it to come back to the work session? Okay, so all those in favor of it going back to the work session on February the 10th, raise your right hand. And if you have any comments or anything, Todd's good about typing all his up, send it in all of us so we can see, so do that. Good, Stuart, too.
Got it.
Our next item, which you chief, is Chief Terrence Green with his 14, how many did you say, 14 cars?
Four.
14, 15 cars, mutual aid agreement with the April County Sheriff's.
You spend less than 40 this year, you're double up next. Been a long time.
Tell them, Chief.
Good evening.
Hey.
Newly elected Sheriff Marge Shaw has requested to enter a mutual agreement with the Lexon Police Department. We're requesting that you put this on our next council session.
Do I hear a motion?
Some moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
Do y'all want to ask Chief 20 questions?
Chief, you want to get us ready?
Yeah, he does. All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. Our next item is a request to provide power washing on Main Street. Town Administrator Rachel Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, I heard first from Councilman Williams and then second from Councilman Smith about a local patch, a local business company, or local business, who was interested in providing free power washing services on Main Street, specifically the 100 block. And, you know, the initial request is that something that we would allow, and I wanted to bring it to this council meeting so council could... And I wanted to bring it to this council meeting so council could understand the full parameters of what we would be talking about if we were to engage with this particular business person and get your guidance on moving forward. Before I say anything further, I wasn't sure either if the councilman wanted to pipe up, to share the conversations that they had with this particular businessman in terms of the services that he wanted to provide.
So, so I will say that he, he has already cleaned Quolly Street Park. Man did a, did a great job and volunteered his services to do that. And it's my understanding, he's also has cleaned the amphitheater for us a couple of times. But he, he had just asked about this and he's now currently washing, he has in the past washed several of our neighborhood signs for free and has, is currently doing that again, I believe.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe, if I, if I recall, I don't know if I was on council or running for council at the time, but we gave him a proclamation for his, or recognized him for, for the neighborhood signs. So I'll just, I wanted to mention that, but I'll second what Councilmember Williams said. He, he reached out and noticed that the sidewalks downtown were a little dirty and obviously said he understood that our park staff can't be everywhere. We have a limited crew and he wanted to offer this service to the town. I appreciate the staff putting together this consideration. There's certainly a lot to consider. I did ask him today, you know, approximately how much, if you were retailing this, how much would this cost? And he told me somewhere between 10 and $12,000. And then just for last clarification is he said that he would do the services from South Lake Drive, essentially at the courthouse, down to, I believe it's 105 West Main, which is that Ice House Amphitheater, the new building. He would do it on the westbound and eastbound sides of the sidewalk. So, and that would be a free service. At night, he wanted to do it overnight so that there weren't any vehicles or anything.
Understood. So thank you both for that. So, when requests like this come in, you know, your initial response is, oh, that, that's a great idea, but as you gather staff together, various departments, and you start talking about what would this mean, we ended up with the list that's been provided to you all at the dais. I'm not saying that this isn't possible, I just wanted to make sure council fully understands that there are potential risks and this would be a volunteer and staff would need to take the lead with coordinating not only the volunteer, but participating and coordinating with the Main Street businesses. So I wanted to walk through just a couple considerations for you all to have, most particularly when it comes to the area which we have the right of way to provide the power washing, but also some of the liability concerns. So our town staff, via agreement with SEDOT, does maintain Main Street. I checked around and I don't know that Main Street has ever been power washed. Staff could not recall from 20-plus years of that had ever had. It's a small nuance, but the property line on either side of the street is not the same. So there are some properties that their property line stops right at their front door. There are others, their property line goes halfway into the middle of what most everybody thinks is a sidewalk. So prior to undergoing anything, we would need to get permission from all property owners to come onto their property to provide this service. While this is, might seem minor, it's important because there's a number of property owners that have decorations or tables, chairs, et cetera, that are outside. And we just need to keep in mind, there may not be 100% participation. Timing is definitely a consideration, not only with time of day, but time of year. We just need to be cognizant, again, of the various decorations. We may have our own Christmas lights, et cetera, in the trees. But ultimately, it's the liability. We would work with this volunteer. He would need to sign a waiver of liability relieving the town of any responsibility if there was to be any damage to any of the facilities, any of the private businesses or any of their private property. And he would just need to understand that he would be responsible for any damage. Just trying to think here. I appreciate the further clarification on the location where he would provide the power washing because there may be folks that say, "Hey, what about us?" And we would be happy to connect those businesses with him, but that would, of course, be up to him as the private business owner as to any further complimentary power washing he'd provide. We just want to make sure that there's not business perception that the town is only doing this for certain businesses, because certainly this is a very generous request. And so, if council is in support, the staff recommendation for moving forward is, staff would hold a meeting with all the property owners that would be affected to let them know, probably alongside this gentleman, of what the proposal is. And they, business owners, property owners would be able to ask this gentleman the questions and then they would be able to make the decision amongst themselves if they'd want to participate. And then they could coordinate the timing of when they think it would be best for all of their businesses. And then staff would subsequently coordinate to ensure that there was no parking on the streets, because again, we wouldn't want any vehicles to be parked, because there would be potential liability for that. Ultimately, the goal is to just reduce liability. One last thing I didn't mention, there are parts of the 100 block that have pavers. And the type of mortar that's used on those pavers is, I'm gonna get it wrong, it's like a soft type mortar. And it's not been tested on what happens if we were to power wash that area. So there is a potential that power washing would get underway and potentially destroy the mortar and the brick. Not sure what's gonna happen. We've just kinda discussed it amongst self, ourselves as staff, but just need to let you know that that is a potential, that if that were to happen, we would need to make the repairs.
So, I have a question. Rachel, would it be possible, which I know y'all are really busy, but would it be possible for you and some of the key staff that would need to be involved to meet with him and just have a discussion up on Main Street and explain all this to him?
Absolutely.
And just see what he thinks from there, from the liabilities, so he would understand, too, his pool. Because this, with all these different businesses and all the cars and everything that's going on, and Quolly Street Park are two different things. And I'm not saying I'm not for it, I'm just saying I think it would be better if he had the conversation with y'all up on Main Street and actually looked at it.
I think that's very fair. And to further respond, because it would be an undertaking for staff with the, the various meetings, I just wanted to make sure this was a priority of council before we dedicated someone to be able to do that, because at this point, I don't know.
I mean, he may look at it and say, after all I'm seeing now and, and what you've given us as far as the different nuances and stuff, he may wanna find a different opportunity to do like the Old Mill Trail or something. I don't, I don't know, but are you okay with that? And Ron said he was.
I, I'm fine with it. May I ask a question? I, I, well, I have two or three questions. My first question is, I know coming down South Church, like the sidewalks, when I looked at the GIS today, it showed that KCR Properties, Teresa Addy, that she owns that sidewalk. But I believe she has paperwork where she actually signed that over to the town.
Okay.
When the one where, when the one-way pairs happened. And I don't know if that's an easement, I don't, I don't exactly know what that is. But is that possible when we redid all of, I guess, Main Street and the one-way pairs? I mean, I wasn't here. Stuart, do you know, like, is it possible that easements exist? Would that help our case for being able to do this?
We can double check, but there was no change of the right of way with that Main Street project in 2002, 2003. It was all done with the right of way that existed.
Okay. And then my other question would be, if we don't have a volunteer do it, and I understand the liability issues, and you're right, Paul may look at this and say, "No, thanks." What is our plan as the town to care for? I mean, because if you do walk those sidewalks, I mean, they are dirty, they need to be pressure washed, they, I mean, I don't know how long they've been there.
We thought we'd give you a broom and a bucket and some scrubbing stuff and you go out there and get at it. Good exercise for training for your triathlon.
I told Paul that if he does this, I will come out and help him, I'd be glad to. But, I, I mean, my question still stands is, we've gotta take care of it. I mean, it, it needs to be cleaned, I mean, there's gum on the sidewalk, that, you know, it's left the big black marks, I don't know what you call it. But over time, it's, left the residue, whatever. You know, how are we caring for it if it's not a volunteer? Because I think it still needs to be done.
So town staff does provide the maintenance, but just has never done the pressure washing for all of the reasons that we've discussed.
Yeah. So I, I think it would be inherent upon.
I think they let God do it with the rain.
It looks pretty dirty. So I think it would be inherent upon council to.
So Todd, what is your thoughts on, don't you think it needs at least be explained, the liabilities and stuff?
Yeah, I, so I also think that signing a waiver, accepting liability is one thing, purchasing an insurance policy, naming the town as a named additional insured would allow us not to have a piece of paper that says he owes us money if something bad goes. And let me be clear, I appreciate someone wanting to volunteer their time and effort to do this. I think the, the threshold question though, it's kinda like a Dave Ramsey thing. If we were just sitting around, is this something we would want done and we would devote the efforts and the funds to do it? Because if it's not, then I'm all about accepting a gratuity as long as it doesn't put us in a worse position, but not if it inconveniences us to where it causes other priorities to, to decline on the list. So I'm, I guess it's one of those things where if we make it work to be great, but I wouldn't want to inconvenience and leapfrog some other higher priority items just because this is free, because.
I mean, I know Randy would have to be involved and he's got a lot of different things going on with the new lane being done. I, I mean, I'm okay for one meeting, just to see and explain to him the liability and everything, but.
He may not wanna deal with it after we tell him he's buying insurance policy.
And you listed on here some other options, too, that he may take for advertisement and for that type of thing if, if this one doesn't work and he doesn't feel comfortable.
I, I don't think that he is doing this for advertisement. He said he didn't care if he get anything out of it. I genuinely think he was walking Main Street and thought, man, these sidewalks are really dirty, which, I mean, they are. I mean, I'm not saying that Main Street itself is dirty, it's not as beautiful, but, you know, at a certain point, you do have to clean and pressure wash your sidewalks. So I would say if we determine that Paul cannot do this, or doesn't want to do this or whatever, could we ask council to, or excuse me, staff to come back with some sort of plan to care for this? I mean, at a certain point, we're gonna have to clean it. I mean.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, Gavin said, I mean, just keep talking about the vendor, it's Paul Taylor. We did give him a, an honorary commendation because he, he went around the town and cleaned up a bunch of neighborhood signs. It's just what he does, he'll find stuff that's dirty in our town and clean it up for free. And, and he, he's a great guy, he's a friend. Certainly appreciate the spirit. But also, unfortunately, people at home can't see this, but I think there's like 15 concerns that go along with this, everything from sidewalk closures to liability, to breaking cars and breaking windows and some of our, some of our materials haven't been tested, parking liabilities, closing the street, yada, yada, yada. I think it's, I think it sounds to me like one of those great ideas that if we really calculated how much staff time we were gonna have to put into this and how much liability we'd have to absorb, it's probably not the greatest idea. Certainly not to put a volunteer in that position. So if there is a, I mean, I, I would think that's something that has to be handled in parks eventually, just, just determining the different right of way issues, it's just a big issue. So shout out, Paul, if you're watching, we appreciate you, man, and you've done a lot for our town. But everything I'm hearing is it sounds like it's a pretty behemoth setup. Paul could, I don't know if he could come in and knock that out in the night, probably could, but it sounds like the setup is pretty behemoth. So why don't we, why don't we do one of those cursory meetings? But again, I don't know, that's the top of our priority list right now. We've got other things that are more pressing.
No, it's not the top of mind, but.
Well, I would still, if, if, if we could ask staff to give us some alternatives if we're not going to use a volunteer, which it sounds like there's not a desire to do that.
Now, we've seen we'd have a meeting to see what he did.
And, and that's fine, I, I think, but, you know, at the end of the day, could we at least ask staff to give us some sort of plan, whether it happens this year or not? I mean, I know that it sounds like it's at everybody's top of their priorities, but we, we need some kind of plan to, to keep those streets clean.
I think you got a lot of other things that need cleaning, like this building needs a lot of updating, too. So I think there's priorities, maybe, you know, we talked about before in council that when we get our new department director in parks and everything and some different things in building, maybe they can come back with a plan to us, they have everything that needs to be kept up and how they gonna keep it up, Gavin, including the sidewalks. Maybe it can all be included in it.
Madam Mayor, real quick, didn't, didn't I just see or hear or read that we were talking about closing down 100th Street of, the 100th Block of Main Street for an event, for the Wine Walk? When is that?
May.
May.
I mean, maybe we worth some effort thinking if we're shutting that street down, I'm not sure what time that event ends, but it's probably nine or 10 o'clock. If we were ever gonna do it, it'd be a great time when it's already shut down and everybody's set up, push everybody out, give maybe Paul or somebody an hour or two to see what they could do in that timeframe and we totally cleaned it out after the event, late at night.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea.
I get one every now and then.
Madam Mayor?
But if, yes, go ahead.
I see Chief out there shaking his head.
You have to get it opened back up in a certain amount of time, don't you?
I felt like he's got some thoughts, though.
Yeah, I was fixing to say, Todd, I forgot about that, you don't have a good idea because it has to be opened back up again.
How long we shut, how long can we shut it down for, Chief?
We could put Chief out there with a pressure washer. We'll get Chief and Randy.
Now you know, go ahead. I see handcuffs on Gavin.
I can, I can reset your watch. How long we shut it down for?
We, we are waiting on DOT approval first to see if we can shut down the road. But be advised, we're shutting down a US1 road. They are putting parameters on when that road needs to be opened back up again. We have to take the stage down, all that stuff out and open the road back. So, great idea, but that road, soon as, what time they said, they tell us to open it back up yet.
So what's, what's your estimate on, what, what kind of window they give you? They give you a three or five or seven?
I forgot what a timeline it was that we put on there.
Okay.
But we, we, we're still waiting on their approval.
I got you.
I don't know.
We got all the faith that Chief will get the approval.
Go with what he says, because Gavin don't wanna go to jail, so we're gonna do what Chief says.
I ain't going.
Rachel, when we get the new person on board and we have building and we're back functioning, full staff, because right now, I know that a lot of people are filling in for a lot of different positions that are not staffed. So maybe at our retreat, y'all can give us a plan of what needs to be updated in the town as far as town facilities, including the, maybe that can be part of our retreat, what need, you know, what the plan is to update if wallpaper's coming off or if this needs to be pressure washed or the sidewalks or whatever, how to keep things clean and beautiful. So, but let's.
Madam Mayor, could I ask one more question? Could the businesses get together and just do this themselves? I mean, we have like the Merchants Association and know what it's called, could they just get together and say, "Well, we want our sidewalks cleaned"? I mean, would the town give them our parts of the sidewalks and allow them to do it?
I would imagine that council would agree to allow them to do the right of way. They would themselves be responsible for, again, like I said, any damage. They would need to coordinate for closure of sidewalk during that time. They would need to ensure that if any chemicals are used, they're proper, I mean, the burden would just be placed on them. But if they took that initiative and coordinated, some of the similar things would still be needed, right? Some coordination with town staff or PD, they would just take the lead on that.
We have to think about the damage to our bricks, so I still think.
And the damage to the bricks as well, that's my whole point.
I still think it's a good idea that y'all have a first meeting with him, just to talk to him and see his thoughts with all of this, and then let's go from there, because that might be a perfect solution, Gavin. Just letting the business take it.
Thank you, Rachel.
So, we're moving forward, were you having a meeting with him and then coming back and telling us, so then possibly the businesses, if it doesn't work for us, coordinating it with him, or if he feels comfortable, maybe letting the businesses get it coordinated?
I will let you know.
Okay. Is that okay, Gavin?
Yes, thank you.
And last thing we have, is that okay with you, as you reported to? Last thing we have is a bid award, East Butler Street Sidewalk and Drainage Improvement. Inspiration Director with a jacket on, Randy Edwards.
Nice.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Okay, so before you is an example, frankly, of what Stuart had brought earlier, but this is the East Butler Street Sidewalk.